I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for its regular September 14th meeting. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fleet?
Here.
Commissioner Anton, Commissioner Fidesco?
Here.
Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here, and Chairman Richard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you would please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While I have you all standing, please, if you would, I need to swear in everybody that will give any testimony either for or against any item on the agenda. So if you say after me, "I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God."
I do.
I would request that you silence any and all electronic devices. And also, if, and when you come up to testify at the podium, if you would please just give us your name and sign in, there's a form up there for you. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the October 10th meeting.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, that's motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, the minutes as printed are hereby adopted. First item on the agenda, new business, planning and zoning item 11-036, Mary P. and Robert A. Rinnick regarding the property located at 206 East West Richmond Street for the following. A zoning code variance request to permit lot coverage greater than the 35 percent maximum allowed in ER3 single-family detached residence district for the purpose of constructing a swimming pool. Please, if you would.
Good evening.
If you would, please, give us your name so the home audience can know who you are.
Okay. My name is Mary Rinnick. This is my husband, Bob. We are requesting a hardship variance for above-ground swimming pool. Our driveway, stairs, patio, all built to code, along with the pool, put us over the maximum lot coverage. Any interruption of the driveway, stairs, patio, we believe could decrease the value of our property and put us at risk for water seepage. Thank you.
Okay, and since you are requesting a variance, state law requires that hardship be associated with this, so could you tell us what the hardship is? Would you allude to that, please?
The hardship was if we decreased any of the driveway, the stairs, or the patio, we are worried about the property value going down, and that water seepage could be a problem.
And if I remember reading your letter, that all of the concrete is pitched so that it drains?
It is, yes. It was all built together, and it was all built as, to code, and it drains properly, so the runoff is...
Okay, so if you were to cut, be forced to cut part of the driveway out, you're going to destroy the drainage?
Probably be a problem.
Okay.
The driveway and the patio.
And the patio.
Because they're all interconnected.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? Okay, we'll close the public comment. Let's start with Commissioner Thomas, if you will, please.
I had a ground, above-ground pool. It's now a fire pit. Enjoy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes. With the revised code, I know you're close, and typically you don't really like to go over the 40 percent. The pool is one of those things that's sort of odd because it, by nature, holds water. So it's sort of, sort of one of those things that, on the surface, seems peculiar. And I know that, you know, nobody fills a pool all the way to the top, so it's probably going to catch the first few inches of rain before it would ever overflow anyway, so I, I think it's, it's a nice thing for you to be able to enjoy your home, and I would support that. I'm happy with everything except that Packers flag I saw.
Well, thank you for your support.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I totally agree with Commissioner Pill and...
On the Packers flag?
No more. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I just have a question. These type of pools are made to last numerous years. How long does this type of pool last? I don't know, but I'm just asking.
It's a lifetime warranty on the siding itself, so I'm figuring 25 years. But our land goes on a slope all the way down. So if you're looking at our patio to the top of the pool, we're just about level. So the drainage goes down. As far as flooding is what you're looking for, neighbors?
I'm just curious about, you know, first of all, how long, since it is, in my mind, a temporary installation, even though it's coming in front of us similar as a permanent installation, it's something that may eventually get removed, you know, and not such that it would destroy the property, you know, something like that. And as far as the drainage goes, have you talked to your neighbors?
Yes, I have. There's no problem there. There's really, behind us is an abandoned house with the lot that goes behind us, and the neighbor behind that, we're talking maybe 300, 400 feet. So it's all kind of wide open, so as far as drainage and runoff, it's fine. Because we looked at all this.
Okay. All right. I know somebody who has a similar type pool, and theirs is round, but it's above-ground, and they have a similar type lot, so I, you know, they've had it for years, and I don't know exactly how close they are to 40 percent, but I'm sure they're somewhat close, and I don't think...
As far as you're saying, when the pool deteriorates?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm just saying is that, as far as the, the look of it, they're, they're fine, you know. I think they're good, and, you know, you should be able to use them, you know, and somewhere down the road, you are going to possibly sell, and, you know, who knows what the new owner will do, and, you know.
Right. Well, then I guess you work with your codes on that, is that when the new owner wants it filled in, then you fill it in, or if they want to keep it, then you have to work with that when you sell.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Commissioner Fleet?
A couple trees in your backyard, not going to interfere with the, with the pool?
Not at all. No.
And do you look to put a decking around the pool, or how are you looking at getting in and out?
We have a ladder.
Yeah.
It's a ladder.
Over, okay.
Right, that's on.
Okay. How about extra lights, outside lights, on the pool, or?
Not from above. We might do some landscaping lights on the bottom.
Okay. Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the area in the backyard, when I was there today, nobody was home, so I just walked in. Where it's dug out, is that where the pool's going to be, I presume?
That's where we'd like it, yes.
And the only question I have, on your letter here, you allude to the pool station's going to rest upon eight six-foot-by-four-foot patio blocks?
Because it's an oval pool?
Yeah.
They do a crisscross of wire in, you know, underneath the pool, and that's what they, the stanchions...
So that's not one solid patio block?
No, it's each individual.
Six-foot-by-four-foot?
I'm sorry, what?
Did I miss, did I incorrectly state, what did I put?
Well, it says eight six-foot-by-four-foot patio blocks. There's got to be the biggest patio block I ever saw.
Six inch, I'm sorry. Six inch.
All right. Just going to say, God bless you, Terry Annett.
It's never going to move, are you kidding? No.
Okay, any further questions? May we have readings of the findings of fact, please?
Mr. Chairman, with the commission's permission tonight, we're going to try something a little bit different. We're going to read all three findings of fact, and then ask for a show of hands from the commission, if that's acceptable.
And if anybody has a problem with one of the three, they can let us know.
Yes.
Okay.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. This property's lot coverage is compromised by a large setback for the owner's house and consequently 70-foot driveway. Were it not for this exceedingly long driveway, lot coverage with the proposed above-ground pool would likely exceed 40 percent. The proposed pool is modestly sized, and the owner proposes to install drainage control measures to mitigate stormwater runoff concerns. Without this variance, the applicant could not install any modest improvements to the property. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The property and surrounding area does not currently experience stormwater flooding problems. The applicant is not able to remove any existing impermeable surfaces to reduce their current lot coverage. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The surrounding area is characterized by deep lots and does not have a current flooding problem. The proposed above-ground pool will not adversely affect surrounding properties or the character of the area.
If you agree with all three findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a variance are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 11036, a zoning code variance request to permit lot coverage greater than the 35 percent maximum allowed in the ER3 single-family detached residence district. So move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fleet, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay, you have our recommendation, but that's all it is, and that'll go before the committee of the whole, and staff can tell you when that'll be.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much for your time.
Going to get a heater with that pool? It's getting cold out.
Thanks, dear.
Good luck to you. Planning and zoning item 11037, Mike Corbett of WD Partners with West Highland Capital Partners regarding the property located at 333 East Ogden for the following. A zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs.
They get it in the booth, Vince, so it'll come up.
Here it comes.
There you go.
Just want to turn it around, Vince.
Okay, great. So...
And if you could please announce your name for the home audience?
My name is Vince Priest. I'm one of the partners of West Highland Capital Partners. We're building the Standard Market on Ogden Avenue, and I didn't change my name to Mike Corbett. I'm not sure if we filled out the application incorrectly, but I apologize if that were to have taken place. I'm standing before you all this evening because when we proposed this project, the neighborhood asked that we come up with a prominent entrance on Ogden Avenue, and we provided all with a rendering at that point in time, and it had a monument sign where that tree is, and then this retaining wall was required during construction, and so that monument sign went away, and this was in lieu of that. So the purpose is to make this a prominent entrance off of Ogden to alleviate traffic from the other entrance exits on Richmond and Blackhawk.
Anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? Okay, we'll close the public comment. Let's start with Commissioner Fleet, if you would.
So the monument sign that you have here on the drawing, on the left-hand side of the drawing, you say that's going away?
Yes.
Okay. Will the Standard Market sign, as you're showing us, will it be backlit or anything?
Yes. Let me, let me say a really articulate architect term. It'll be a key opportunity to identify the store and ingress and egress point in the middle of the block. The individual halo-lit, pin-mounted letters will hopefully provide a precedent for more integrated signage in the future.
Well, I like it that it looks like it'll be at roughly eye level for most people coming in that haven't been there before, and an easy target to pick up.
It'll be really tight and look very sharp, and it'll be backlit, you will see it during the day, it'll be black during the day, and it'll be backlit at night.
Okay, no further questions.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I just wanted to make a comment about that halo-lit. I know what that is, and in case somebody else doesn't know what that is, the sign actually does not shine through, it actually reflects off the back surface.
Yes.
And that's what creates the halo effect. So really, this, this is really just kind of a solid sign with the lights reflecting off and coming out, and it'll light up the general area. And so I just wanted to make that point, so people understand that it's not glaring out at the people who are driving down Ogden Avenue.
That's right.
But it is prominent. I've seen numerous signs like this. I like those signs. And I think it's going to actually look a little better than the other sign.
Yeah, it is. It's, when, when they proposed it, we were excited about it, and I think everyone will like it. It's understated, and it's, it's very in keeping with the balance of the project.
Yeah. I drove by the building the other day, and it really is shaping up. It's really looking nice.
You should see it today. Today, they have almost 70 percent of the front facade completed.
Yeah, I drove by with, without that, so it's just, that was last week, so...
And then we got a really nice billboard promoting the business, and we positioned it prominently in Downers Grove. So that just went up today.
That's great. Well, I wish you luck, because I, I think it's, it's a great improvement, and hope the neighbors like it.
Commissioner Van Buren?
When I read this, it looked as though you were adding another sign in addition to one that was there, but it looks like this is one in lieu of one that was already there.
It isn't, it is an increase. When I proposed this back in, whenever this came up with the neighbors, the monument sign was drawn in, in that rendering, and then when we went to install this, I said, before we buy this thing, we better check with the village and make sure that it's good, because we're, we're taking a sign away that's a monument and putting this thing, and the village said, hey, that sign wasn't applied for, so it doesn't matter which one you do, but you got to apply for it. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and you're still below, you're still below this total square footage length.
Yeah, we're, we're below.
No, it's great. Thank you.
Commissioner Pill?
Yeah, I noticed that, I had the pleasure of being here for the three months of hearings, and I know that was a key point, to be able to identify this entrance area and, and alleviate some of the traffic and give another option, provide another option for people who are traveling, particularly those who would be traveling eastbound on Ogden Avenue. So I think this is, this is a great idea, and to me, this is a first-class look for a first-class project. I mean, it just goes in keeping with everything we're seeing there. I drive by frequently, because I reside and work in the general area, so I've been watching with, with excitement the progress on it, and can't wait to see it open. I wish you luck.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
I want to commend you and staff for working together and all the, because when the first meeting, and all the hubbub, and all different sides, there's two, three different sides coming together, and I'm anticipating this, this opening up with the vast majority of citizens and staff and owners being happy. And it would have been hard to imagine on the first, on the first go-around, and my compliments to you trying to work within for, for it all. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I mean, I don't know if this is on TV or not, but just, we're appreciative of everything that the people of Westmont have done, and the people in the immediate area, the neighbors. It's hard to believe that we would come together with all of them, but, but we have. We, we worked really hard. There's, there's a handful of uniquely impacted neighbors, and, you know, I don't know that they're going to jump for joy over this store because, because it's a change, but I think that the relationship is, it's a, they respect us, we respect them, and we have a good working relationship with all the people that were here opposing the project at the beginning, and we tried hard to do that. And the village has worked really hard with us to sort of protect us from ourselves with mistakes. I mean, there's just so many rules and regulations. So, yeah, thanks to everybody.
Don't I have? And I can echo all of my fellow commissioners' comments that, when I was up there today, your store looks magnificent. I can't wait for you to open it, and I just wish you the best of luck on everything.
Thank you.
I, I don't see how you can help but be a success. And especially like what you did to the properties to the south of you, the sidewalk all the way down, Traubi and that.
And we did, we did a sidewalk on Richmond from the Canopka's home to Traubi, and then we put in turnaround driveway and landscaping for the family directly across the street from the Blackhawk entrance, and then we put in 25 trees along the south property line of the west parking lot, as well as the north-south property line that backed up to Timothy Opja North and Carrie Brugel. So both of those sides had concerns, and we put in huge trees to block them, and so...
Good show. All I can say is you appear to be a class operation, and I'm glad you're in Westmont.
Well, we're glad to be here. Thank you.
All right, we have a variance request. Could we have readings of the findings of fact, please?
Mr. Chairman, maybe we could ask Mr. Priest just comment. Vince, you want to talk a little bit about the targeted opening date and have everybody get ready for that?
Yeah, sure. So we have all kinds of vendors that are delivering what's called FFNE, which stands for Fixtures Furniture and Equipment, and they're waiting for us to, you know, finish a little bit more of closing out the storefront, that's the windows and the glazing, and also some of the binder in front of the immediate entrance there. But the floors have been stained, the drywall is sanded and muddied, all of the conduit and refrigeration lines are just sitting there waiting for this stuff to get placed, so we've probably got three and a half weeks or so of that stuff to happen, and then a ton of carpentry work to go on finishes inside of there, and we are anticipating opening the beginning part of November, so the first week or so of November, yeah. Soft week, soft openings the week before, and then a big opening the latter part of the first week of November.
I look forward to be one of those attending.
You will.
May we have readings of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Brand identification through signage is a significant requirement for this business along heavily trafficked Ogden Avenue. The applicant proposes to add one additional sign measuring 35 square feet on a retaining wall. The overall square footage of all signs for this business is below the maximum square footage allowed by code. Without this variance to achieve maximum marketing exposure, the applicant cannot yield a reasonable return on its investment. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Even with this additional proposed sign, the total square footage of all signs for this business is below the maximum square footage allowed by code. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property is located along heavily trafficked and heavily developed Ogden Avenue. Virtually all businesses in the area have multiple signs, many of which exceed both the maximum number and square footage allowed by code. The proposed modest sign will not impact surrounding properties, distract traffic, or otherwise alter the character of the area.
If you agree with all three's criteria, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a variance are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 11037, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs. So move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, you have our recommendation, and staff can tell you when you'll be scheduled for a committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Planning and zoning item 11038, Brent Schroda with Blackin Beach on behalf of Samsung for Sprint regarding the property located at 1801 35th Street for the following. A zoning code variance request to permit more than three antenna on a structure.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brent Schroda. As you said, I'm here on behalf of Samsung and Sprint, seeking a approval on a variance of the number of antennas that are currently installed and that will be installed on the site.
It should come on in just one moment.
Okay. This is as long as he explained it. Okay, and just to introduce the parties, obviously, I'm from Blackin Beach. We're subcontractors for Samsung Sprint, and we're entering this petition on behalf of the owner, landlord as well. The site is located at 1801 35th Street, and this is the Maze Lake Senior Living Complex. It's an R6 senior living class, and the current uses are the senior living complex, and there's an existing Sprint telecommunication site installed on the rooftop. Zoning relief we're seeking, obviously, here is the addition to more than three antennas on this rooftop. Here's the zoning district. The surrounding areas around the Maze Lakes to the south and, and east are office buildings, and it's residential to the west. To the north, it is actually Oak Brook jurisdiction. The location of the site, and this is kind of small, it's hard to see, if you can see the pin, it's at, the building's somewhat centrally located on the parcel. The parcel's relatively large, and it's on the rooftop, obviously, which you'll see here. There's three sectors, and there's existing sled mounts that house nine panel antennas facing northwest, northeast, and southeast. And what we're planning to do here is to replace, essentially replace two existing antennas per sector with two new antennas, and this will provide existing 2G, 3G technology, and then also add 4G technology to the area without increasing the number of antennas that are currently on the site. So essentially what they're doing is they're consolidating the existing 2G, 3G technology into one antenna, and then adding a 4G technology antenna as well. And this is just a diagram you saw from your construction drawings of the three sectors. It's doing the same thing for all three sectors. Equipment, there is equipment installed on a platform on this rooftop. It's behind a screened wall, and what we're proposing is to remove two of the existing antenna, that's, two of the existing cabinets and installing two new cabinets that are smaller and more efficient to run these new radio antennas. The elevation is, is not a factor here. It's, we're below or flush to the penthouse, so... Regarding coverage, essentially this is going to point to the hardship. If you notice, it's, it's a bit hard to see, but right in the middle of these maps, if you, if you look at the one to the left, there's a circle, a blue circle, and then you'll see a blue island there around green. Essentially, this is showing what the current coverage of the 4G is, so it's non-existent at this site. If you notice the black points with the red around them, that's the web of existing telecommunications sites. So we, we're, we have a void in the coverage in this specific area, which makes this, the location and the height and the site unique to this specific grid, this network grid. So if you see on the left, this is without, without the 4G antenna, and to the right would be the coverage with the 4G antenna. Now, for the 2G, 3G, and ex... Now, for the 2G, 3G, and existing voice and data services, this is a breakout of what one or the other, the 800 spectrum or the 1900 spectrum, what it would look like if you only had three antennas. So if you had three antennas, you could assume that you could only use one technology. It'd be the 800, the 1900, or the 4G technology, because they would shoot one technology per sector. So every antenna uses a different technology, essentially. But what we're planning here is a consolidation, like we said, for the 800 and 1900. So you'll see that if you only had 800, if you only had three antennas per this site, you would be devoid coverage for the 1900 and the 1.6, which is the 4G antenna in this area. And you'd see, obviously, the coverage is filled in with the map to the right, the coverage map to the right. I have some photos here from the parking lot. If you notice, the sled mounts are set back a bit from the edge of the building, which ends up aesthetically decreasing the impact. Here's another sector, and then here's the last sector. It's a bit washed out here. And to speak just a bit to the findings of fact, essentially, here, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations of the district. So here, essentially, what we're proposing is that we're using essentially unused rooftop space. We're going to provide 3G, 4G services. That's the services that are required for this site. There was a gap in technology there that wouldn't be able to be covered if only one, essentially, one technology were able to be used here. So one, three antennas per this site. The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Again, the location of this within the network grid, the height and location are essential characteristics of providing this coverage to the residents, business, and professionals and users in this area. And if only three antennas were permitted, you wouldn't, it wouldn't allow the coverage that was required, and it wouldn't be able to use the site. Variation, if granted, will not alter essential character of locality. This one, essentially, there's, as you saw, sled mounts are already existing. The antennas that we're proposing would be swapped, so there would be the same amount of antennas there. And the visual impact is decreased by their setback. We have a screening wall, obviously, on the equipment platform. And also, the nature of the location of the building within the parcel ends up shielding a lot of the visual impact. From the north, there's trees to the north, parking lot to the west and the south, and it's centrally located in the parcel. And there's, to the east, it's a pretty far distance to the offices. Thank you.
The long and the short of it is, right now, you have six antenna on the structure. Nine?
Nine.
No, two, four, six.
There's nine antennas up there.
Oh, there's nine antennas.
Yeah.
And when you finish, there's still going to be?
Nine antennas.
Nine antennas.
Correct.
You're not increasing any, so, but you're going to enhance the service for everybody and everything.
That's correct.
Okay, very fine. Will anybody from the public speak on this issue? Okay, let's close the public comment, and let's go to Commissioner Thomas.
The chairman just said we're going from nine to nine, and how many cabinets?
There's, there would be, there's four, and there'll be four.
Yeah, right. So we're going from nine to nine, and four to four. Are the antennas smaller?
The antennas are slightly thinner, but generally the same size.
And the cabinets?
Cabinets are smaller, yeah.
All right, so we're getting more technology and less space?
Right.
As technology improves. Now, we have fourth generation now added.
Right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pill? I have no questions. I think this is a good thing. It will help the folks who use your services in that area. Commissioner Van Buren?
I'm one who uses your services. Appreciate the upgrade. The, this is something we've been hearing on all our antennas, getting upgraded. And I guess, as technology proceeds, we'll continue to hear more. Fortunately, when you do so, you don't really expand your sites. They actually are being condensed a lot. So it's fine with me.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I think this is either the fourth or fifth different vendor who's doing the same thing. Actually, there's one recently that came in front of us that's on top of a building over on Route 83. So it's very similar to that one, and I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, just curious. Are you going to use a crane lift to get the cabinets up there?
Uh, I believe if it's accessible. This construction generally makes that determination a little later in the project, but yeah, if it's accessible, they will. This one, I'm trying, I was just out at the site. From the west side, the parking lot should give them adequate, you know, spacing to get the crane up. And I don't think they're obstructed otherwise.
Okay. No questions. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, and I, for one, I would compliment you, because as my fellow commissioners said, we've, everybody's upgrading their antenna, and usually, they want to increase the amount of antennas.
Right.
You're staying with the same, sir. You're to be complimented. I thank you.
Thank you.
All right, since we have a variance request, may we have readings of findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicant will face a hardship in expanding its cellular network coverage and implementing technology upgrades without the ability to replace six antennas and related equipment at this location. The ordinance's restriction to three antennas would not allow the applicant to implement its technology at any location in the village as the applicant currently requires and uses nine antennas at this location. The applicant seeks to take advantage of utilizing an existing office structure at a lower cost to the applicant rather than burdening the village and the public with installing a new cellular tower structure. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant could not expand anywhere within the village without a variance, given the ordinance's limitation to no more than three antennas on a structure. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Due to the proposed location of these antennas on an existing office building, these proposed antennas will not be particularly noticeable to the public and will not alter the essential character of the area. The existing height of all antennas will be maintained with this replacement.
If you agree with all three findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a zoning code variance are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 11038, a zoning code variance request to permit more than three antenna on a structure.
Motion to approve.
Second?
That's motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir. You have our recommendation for approval, and again, staff can tell you when you'll be scheduled for a Thursday evening committee of the whole.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Planning and zoning item 11039, Niger Hyder of Sunshine Montessori LLC regarding the property located at 6424 South Cass for the following. A special use permit request to operate a Montessori school in the B2 General Business District. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Niger Hyder. I am the director of Sunshine Montessori School. I'm here to get approval of special unit permit for my school. It's a small school, and I would like to have only 13 to 15 students in my school. And the ages of the students are three to six-year-old, and the timing is nine to 12. And I look many areas, and I like this unit because it's the back of the mall, Harbor Mall, and the area is really quiet, and it has lots of parking space, and there's no through traffic. So I like this unit, and it's because this school is small, so I think it's an ideal for my situation.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? If you would, please, come sign in and give your name to the home audience.
Yes, my name is Art Schoolcraft. I own the unit next door to where they're proposing. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about our complex. It's 16 units of professional office complex, individual condos. They're around 1,000 square feet each. It just seems odd to me as a resident there that to have this type of business within the complex because there's nowhere for children to go outside, other than maybe play in the parking lot. So that's, that's my main concern, and the increased traffic in that area of the building, so.
Ms. Hyder, would you care to respond to the, about the children playing in the parking lot? What kind of a play area do you have for the children?
Well, the timing is only nine to 12, and my students are not the toddler age infant. It's a, it's a quality education-based school, and my kids doesn't go outside to play outside. They mostly stay inside, and like, the school session goes from September to May, and winter time, we hardly go outside. We stay mostly inside. We have indoor equipment to play with them, and my kids never go outside.
Okay, very good. Is there anybody else from the public who will speak on this issue? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment. Let's start with Commissioner Fleet, if you would.
Listen, you state that the children participating at your school, they'll have a staggered time for arrival, two and a half hour window? How will that work?
The timing is that the school will start nine. They come nine to 9:15. So there's a time limit. They don't come all at the same time. Same thing happens during dismissal time. So, and it's a big parking lot. There's no through traffic, and I don't see any traffic congestion there, because it's a big parking lot, and that's why we are in the back of the, so it's away from the traffic.
So, questions, Diana?
Okay, Commissioner Fidesco?
I noticed that in your letter, you stated the maximum of 15 students, 15 children at a time, and you're looking 14 to 15. Is that your current enrollment?
So far, the eight students already committed, but I don't know how far, but I won't take more than 14 to 15 students. That's my goal, because I like to keep a smaller classroom and give them good education. That's my goal.
Okay, yeah, because as far as, and you don't have any, any vision of expanding in the future?
Well, if I will have more kids, then I might open an afternoon session, maybe one to four, maybe.
Okay, so it would still be a maximum 15 student per session.
Per session, yeah.
You would add a session, and it'd still be during the school day. These are children that aren't of school age, but I understand what you're doing. These are younger children.
They are three to six-year-olds.
Right, right. You know, at six, eight, six years old, they're starting to go to kindergarten. But, okay. I don't see an issue. I mean, I, I know the area well, and I understand the other gentleman's concern, in that it is a, a building that has, tends to have professionals, but being that it's a small group, and it's closed session, you know, specific time, I don't see where there's a problem with it.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Is there, what are the, the construction walls between units? Pardon me? What is the composition of the construction of the walls between units? Cinder block?
No.
Drywall?
It's built with like a fire coat.
Oh, okay.
On each side.
Double fire, okay.
Yeah.
So that would, that, that, that's, I should have known that. It's, it should be?
It was built several years ago by Heinz.
Yeah. I was on the board here when it was built, so.
The whole, it's a common name.
Right, right. So the, I was concerned about sound, and that, that should not be a problem. I really don't have a problem with it.
Commissioner Pill? I have no questions. Commissioner Thomas?
I shared his concern about, you know, kids being, but like you said, nine to 12, just about the time they're getting cranky.
They go out.
They go home.
They go home, yeah. We don't provide lunch or anything. No, they just come for education, and they go home.
Okay, so, so they're, they're in there for their classes and that, and when, right in time for recess, they're out the door.
They are out the door.
You also stated about the staggered start time between nine and 9:15?
Mm-hmm.
So you're, you're just telling them you can report nine to 9:15?
Yes.
You haven't assigned anybody times. First, you guys show up at nine o'clock, you are nine five. So they could all report at the same time or not?
Or not, no. You know what? This is a Montessori school, so the three-year kids stay in one room. Some kids wake up early. They could like to come at nine, but I give them nine, 15 minutes extra time to come in. So it's nine to 9:15, and same thing dismisses.
I'm just thinking about the traffic.
Oh, traffic?
Cars delivering, dropping off.
But there are plenty of parking. It's not like they can.
But then again, you're not the only one, you're not the only resident of the, are, is, you have neighbors on both sides of you?
In the back, we have neighbors, right?
Right.
Only the backside. The front is the main road, Cass Avenue.
The front uses some of the back parking spots, too. The front units are predominantly more retail-oriented, barber shop.
If you could, sir, please come to the podium. The home audience cannot hear you.
The parking lot's a U-shape, goes all the way around the building. The front part, where the, it's more retail-oriented, because it faces Cass, people, most don't, don't really know what's in the back. Our offices are a stockbroker back there, and myself. The cars in the front, to allow for their customers to come, a lot of the workers park in the back also, and they walk up to the front building. So the buildings are in a U, are a shape like a square with a little courtyard in the middle, and so the.
What I was concerned about was.
So she doesn't have, she doesn't have all the parking back there, basically.
It's kind of limited back there, you know. You don't, really can't be looping around. You're going to have to come in and park and, and go. I was saying that if, if you see a problem of everybody coming at once and there be a back, maybe you might want to go to a staggered assigned time, you know. But you have to wait and see what happens first. Other than that, I'm good with it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I, for one, I like the way the parking lot is laid out for no through traffic. You're on a dead end there. So that does add to the safety of the children who's going to be there. Mr. Kimball, question. Since we have a special use permit, should we recommend that there only be 15 and not to exceed?
I think that would certainly be a special use condition that this commission could impose, yeah.
Right. Any further comments, commissioners?
Chairman, you may want to clarify whether that's per session or total enrollment?
Let's talk about it, then. If we, let's do that on a second, a separate motion. We'll do the special use, and then we'll do the, but per session, I would think. What do you guys think?
I agree, because if it's at two different times of the day, I mean, there's still a maximum during that period of 15.
Well, the question is, is that a reasonable, would there be a problem if there were 20?
Hater?
No, I don't, I don't even take 20 kids. I, my limit is.
Only because of your limited ability to?
No, no, I can take more than kids, but I keep my quality of education. That's why I do it.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's, thank you.
So, okay. So you don't mind a limitation of 15?
I would suggest 16, because when you look at her layout, she's got eight tables of two, to eat. So would you be happy with 16, then?
Yes, I will be happy with 16.
So, if you want to grow on, okay.
Per session.
Per session. All right. May we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. All operations will be conducted indoors. Adequate parking is available on site. Most surrounding properties are Zone B-2 general business. The students will range between the ages of 3 to 6. As such, this proposed school will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The proposed school will operate from an existing space within a mall complex. Sufficient parking is available. The proposed school will not result in adverse noise, vibration, odors, or traffic. As such, this use will not adversely affect surrounding properties. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. The proposed school will occur in existing space within a mall complex, therefore will not impede any future development of the surrounding area. Criteria number four, adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and our other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. All such necessary facilities are already available to this site. Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The school will serve up to 15 students, or should we say for this purpose, Senator Chairman, 16 students. Will have limited hours of operation, and will have staggered pickup times. Therefore, traffic to this site will be minimal. Existing ingress and egress can accommodate this limited traffic. Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. No variances or code waivers are sought in conjunction with this proposed school. Criteria number seven, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition number two. Based on the limited class size, limited hours of operation, and pickup times, this proposed use will not cause appreciable traffic congestion or hazard to pedestrian safety.
If you agree with all seven criteria, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a special use permit are hereby adopted. Before we do a motion, Ms. Hyder, I just have one question, and this is gonna show my ignorance, but you're gonna have children from 3 to 6, perhaps?
Yeah.
Are kids at the three-year-old, are they still in diapers, anything like that?
No, no, they are all body trained, and they are quite independent.
Okay. I'm just worried about disposal.
No, no, they're...
Okay, that's all I have. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Planning and Zoning Item 11039, a special use permit request to operate a Montessori school in the B-2 general business district.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a stipulation on the special use, that the amount of students per session would be limited to 16. So moved?
Second.
It's motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, Ms. Hyder, you have our recommendation, and staff can tell you when you go before the village board.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Good luck to you.
Thanks.
Planning and zoning item 11040, Danny McBride of Auto Glass Masters with Westmont J&amp;J Service regarding the property located at 110 East Chicago for the following. Special use permit request to operate an auto glass and upholstery business in the B-2 general business district. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Danny McBride, and I started the auto glass and auto interior business in Chicago, and is still operating in the city of Chicago. And with your approval, I'm looking forward to move, to moving my business into Westmont. I would say 85% of my, of my business is mobile. I have 10 mobile trucks that I just, I dispatch out to insurance company, insurance companies, body shops, dealerships. We load our guys up with windshields, door windows, and go out on the site, job site, install glass. My techs are, they drive their vehicles home, okay, so there, there are no vehicles in the shop. They come in the morning, load up, and they go out, do their routes, go home, come back the next day, same thing. As far as the auto upholstery, I only have one tech for that, so I'm only, I can only do one to two vehicles a day. That vehicle is also inside. It normally takes about four or five hours to do a seat repair, or a convertible top installation. So, I'm looking forward to moving my business here with your approval.
All right. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? Please, if you would, sign in and tell us your name.
Look in there.
My name is Amira Pedalik, and I own the two residence next to east of that property. They are homes that I rent out. My concern is, since they are homes, the kind of mess they are gonna make, the noise. Mine are homes for families. I have the, one right next door is a three-bedroom home, and the other one is a two-bedroom home. They are completely remodeled and in perfect conditions. But my concern is the noise, the trucks in and out. With the other business that I was there, I put up a fence for the privacy, but because of the trees, it's not a, a good fence, and I don't know what kind of fence they are gonna put up, especially the glass and all that. What kind of provision are they gonna have for protection of the people living next door? The trucks in and out, yeah, there is exit for the property, both ways, there is exit on 47, this exit, and Naperville Road. What is the safety for the people coming out, since the, since my driveway is right next to the exit of the trucks on Naperville Road?
All right, I'll ask...
The same thing across the street is, across the street on Naperville, that's all residential.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
My, my main concern, the noise, the trucks, the kind of, kind of business they are, you know, what you guys are going to ask of them to maintain the residential part of it.
Okay, just stay there for a second. Shannon, would you please address her concerns as to landscaping, fencing requirements?
I just want to confirm, you said you're to the west?
East.
To the east. Okay. So, your properties are also in the B-2 district as well? You're due east?
Yes.
Okay, so those are, just to kind of set the stage, those are...
There's two houses between the...
Those are non-conforming residences in the business district. The, the petitioner has, has provided a landscaping plan, which is a requirement of the special use permit. The zoning ordinance divides auto uses into two categories. The proposed use is in the less obtrusive of those two categories, because there's not fender work, painting, and bodywork. So, that particular category, had he offered those services, actually couldn't be adjacent to residential, but because the type of auto work that he's proposing has slightly less of an impact, the landscaping screening was what is required by code. Danny, do you have a copy of that that you could put onto the projector to show? There's an island that's proposed to screen the vehicles from view along Cass, excuse me, Chicago Avenue, and I believe there are some mature plantings along the west property line, just south of the building itself, that's screened from that area. If you could just point out with your finger where the new island is proposed, if you could point out with your finger where that new landscaping island is proposed, that might be helpful to her. There are some other conditions that were mentioned in the staff?
That's the front, that's on 47.
Okay.
47 does not concern me. What concerns me is Naperville Road.
Okay, there's a fence near you here.
Yes, very nasty fence that they have there.
That's gonna be changed. That's gonna be changed. And one, one good thing about, about my business is that I'm a, I'm a 9 to 5 business, and as I stated, we're not gonna make much noise, because 85% of my business is outside. If I, and there's no power tools needed for an auto glass installation. It's just a cutting, cutting tool, manual cutting tool, and the sealer, and the glass, obviously. So, there's no pounding, you know, there's no mechanical work, you know, nothing like that.
Actually, in inclement weather, if they were to have glass replaced at your, at your location?
Yes.
It'd most probably be done inside anyway.
For sure, yes. And the doors are closed, and again, like I said, there's no power tools.
Ma'am, something else I should mention is that there are some staff recommendations that accompany the commission's packet this evening, and included in that is something that we typically do with auto-oriented businesses, and that's prohibiting loudspeakers and those overhead communication methods that some dealerships and repair shops use. So, that's one thing that we try to require when there's a special use permit like this to help mitigate the noise a little bit. And the screening is required on both the Chicago Avenue side and the Naperville roadside.
Yeah, because before, I owned that property for the last 25 years to 30 years, and the village, they did absolutely nothing to protect the homes. They let that not to have a fence. I had to put up the fence. They, in the front, when the, when the trucks took the fence down, they did not make a repair. They do not take care of all the weeds right there. I had to put a stone right on the side of Naperville Road, because all the mess, and the village seems to completely be blind under kind of problems.
We understand that they've been difficult neighbors. Pressler, Preisler Motors was there previously. With the commission's permission, I'd be happy to read the recommended conditions into the report. That may be something that John would have discussed this evening, had he been able to join us.
Please do.
These are the conditions that were recommending be made a part of the special use permit if it is granted. First is that all vehicles awaiting service and pickup will be stored within the screened area indicated on the landscape, or the site plan. Second, no tow trucks, semi-trailers, or similar items will be stored on site. Third, the number of vehicles which may be displayed, stored, or parked on the property is not to exceed a reasonable interpretation of the space shown on the landscaping plan. The landscaping plan, because part of it was aggregate and stone, it wasn't striped, but we interpreted that to be approximately 10 to 12 vehicles that would be stored in that screened area. The next is that the four parking spaces in front of the building along the west property line should be reserved for employee or customer parking for vehicles that don't require service. So, in other words, no vehicles that are waiting repair would be right in front along Chicago Avenue. Next, vehicles may not be sold from this property. The sale or advertisement of any vehicles for sale at this location shall result in the immediate termination of any special use permit that may be issued. No outdoor sound system, megaphones, or similar sound devices may be used. The hours of operation must be standard and customary, and that garage doors and bays should not remain open unless they're being used for entrance or exit from the service base. So, those are conditions that are intended to try to make sure that this would be a good neighbor.
The garage doors are fine, but are you having any request for them to take care of the part that, that gate is, that is in such a bad condition that the gate, the fence? I just had a new fence put right there, because it was, it was a mess there. I put up that fence, but the gates are in terrible condition. And that's, that's right there under my driveway, and if I rented to people with children, they are right there.
I don't want to speak for Mr. McBride. He's, he's acquiring the property as is, but I know he does plan to make some investments. Maybe he can speak to that.
I took, I know, rebuilding the fence, okay, and it's first the landscaping, the weeds that you're talking about, it's all gonna be, be removed. You'll love it.
I am a very nasty customer. When they step on my territory, I protect my investment, okay?
I love it. I'm working with you.
I don't come and give you guys a hard time, because nobody does anything, so. But I do, I do give them a hard time when they make a mess there.
I didn't, I didn't hear what, when she asked what your plans were for possibly the gate, or whatever you're talking about, I didn't hear your response.
Oh, I, I plan on installing a new gate in the rear. I do it, but it's, it's very tacky looking, and it's falling apart.
So, you're, you're agreeing with her assessment of the situation back there, and you will take steps?
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, to your satisfaction?
Yeah, because they, they see, they leave the garbage there, and if it is gonna be car parts, the other ones, they just left pieces of the trucks there.
But this is a perfect opportunity, then, since you have stated in the past that the village has been blind to the situation.
Exactly.
This is an example of how the system can work, and when somebody new comes in, the, the village can look at it anew, and maybe fix it, so that now we have two neighbors that will be together.
On my age, sir?
We hope.
I've been like many times, so that's what I wanted here in writing, okay?
Right, right.
They promised me.
Well, when that falls apart, then I expect you to be in Fred's office, and complaining.
Okay.
Is that okay, Fred?
Certainly.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's just that corner, it's, there's two business, that, that building, and then the corner one, and then the recyclable or whatever. But it's, it's one of the main parts of town. I, that mess there is right, I have the, that is residential. It's just, it's just to improve the property.
It may bear repeating in this forum here. The village is going through its comprehensive plan writing process, and that's one of four areas within the village, that corridor, the Naperville and Chicago Avenue area, that is going to be examined through that process, because it is such a collection of uses that are not complementary to each other and the surroundings.
Exactly.
It sort of evolved over time before zoning was in place, and, and we understand that, and we look forward to trying to vision how that can be better in the future.
Better in the future, yeah.
Okay. If I may say something, that the, I agree that there's a dumpster in the back, but that's gonna be moved inside the gate. So, you won't, you'll have no more dumpster in the back as well. So, we'll have a new fence. Dumpster will always be inside, and I will redo the, there's gravel, there will be no more gravel there, so it'll be taken care of.
Okay. You know, just my concern is that my, my properties are residential, residence, so.
And you might want to, again, come and testify when it, when it goes before the trustees, who have the vote, the power of the vote, and, and then you can both testify for your intentions and show them that they've been blind.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Will anybody else from the public speak on this issue? Okay, we'll close the public. We'll start with Commissioner Thomas, if you have any more.
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Pill?
Yeah, this is a unique area. It's probably one of the largest eyesores we have in the village, and this property is, is example number one. So, you're, you're getting yourself involved with a handful here. I mean, to start on the north side, the gate is, is broken and that fence, and according to the drawing, this may be mislabeled. And according to the drawing, this may be mislabeled. It shows on here that you're replacing that, that it's a wooden fence. And actually, the wooden fence is on the east border. The north border is a metal fence with like, I understand you're both wearing red, but it's not, it's not a pretty red-looking, and a lot of those are broken and missing, and it doesn't look good. Now, the apron in front of the garage doors, the apron on Chicago Avenue is a brand-new concrete apron. The apron on Naperville is completely deteriorated and is falling apart. And that's a relatively expensive fix to do that. I didn't see any call or notice for that. But there's actually large holes and chunks of it missing, and that's a fairly wide expanse there. So that's an area that does not look good either. As far as the trees, I'm less excited about the landscaping plan than some of my fellow commissioners are. The existing trees on the west side show them extending all the way to the existing concrete apron. When you visit the site, those three trees are actually poor specimens of trees and don't even go to the middle of the second parking spot of four. So this is actually overstated by 50% or more on this drawing. I do think that this shrub island is nice. It will provide screening, but it's limited. This is an example of a property that's before there was stormwater engineering, so the entire property is built upon. Now, you also mentioned the elimination of the gravel, and I want to caution you that the gravel on the side behind that screening, between the screening and the repaired gate, I'm hoping, that would invoke stormwater detention rules if you were to change that. So you need to be careful with that and to work with Shannon and Fred on that because that can cause some major expenses and problems also for you. I'm, I also, on that backside, I guess it's the backside, the north side, so we've got the fence and the gate, we've got the, the apron is in poor shape, but the building itself also is rough. A lot of the masonry is cracked, there are bricks broken off. It obviously was not well-kept by the previous occupant and owner. So you've got your hands full with that, and while I think it's a, it's a fairly good checklist that we've got, I think in the interest of making the property better, it's going to take some, some doing. Do you plan on doing anything with the north concrete apron or with any of the broken or missing masonry on the building, the bricks?
Yes, sir. Whatever the zoning need me to do, I'll have to do it. My only thing that I would ask is, October 14th is the closing date on the building. And if it goes beyond that, I'll probably lose the deal. So I'm asking the commissioners if they'll allow me to do my business there and let me make the improvements during my occupation.
Now, you also mentioned that you have a mobile fleet that goes out. So now, when 5 o'clock comes and the fleet returns?
They don't return.
Oh, the guys take them home?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was curious, one of the conditions that Shannon read is that there would be no tow trucks, semi-trailers, or similar items. Do you have work trucks at all that would be parked in the garage and things overnight?
No. I have two pickup and delivery vehicles that we go to dealers and pick up a car, bring it back for the seat repair, more comfortable top replacement, more repair, and take it back to the dealer or the body shop and bring our car back to the shop, and it will stay inside.
See, I find that to be a reasonable part of his business, so I'm unclear as to what we're actually saying if we were to add these, these bullet points.
These can be clarified and discussed further, but it sounds like you're proposing that you have, is it two, it's not tow trucks, they're trailer vehicles?
No, they're E-150 vans.
Okay, and that they would be stored inside?
No, my techs take them home, and they come in the next day to load their route. I get a morning delivery, every morning I get a delivery from my warehouse of windshield glass. Then they come and load up. It takes about a half an hour to pick their route and the glass, and they go out.
What would need to stay on-site overnight, then?
If I decide to do a interior of a vehicle, of a seat or convertible top repaired, a customer can't pick up to the following day, that will stay inside.
The repaired, the vehicles that are being repaired?
Right.
But in terms of towing equipment or trailers or any-
I have no need for towing vehicles.
What kind of vehicle do you, what kind of vehicle do you use to shuttle to the dealers?
E-150 vans.
Back?
E-150 vans.
The same as, as your route truck?
Yes, yes.
And those are the ones that go home?
And those two stay in the parking lot?
No, I don't, I have-
They go home too?
They go home too, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Pill? Perhaps that statement about tow trucks, semi-trailers, or similar items probably alludes to what's on there now, that lousy old trailer that's probably been there since I've been born. So they want to make sure this does not happen again.
Yeah, is that going to be gone, then, the trailer?
Absolutely, yeah. Like I said, I'm a nine-to-five guy, and instead it's an eight-to-two.
Okay. Well, I just, there's some potential here for us to make this area a small bit better. This is not going to be a transformation by any chance, but we have a chance to make some improvement to start down that road of making it look better, and that's what I'd like to see. And certainly we'll be keeping an eye on that. So I welcome you, and I hope that the two of you can coexist, and I hope that there's a fresh start. But I also hope that we can do something with this property to bring it back into what it should look like.
Oh, yes, sir, I agree.
Okay.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, following through with what Commissioner Pill said, you have an existing, successful business, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So whatever, for whatever reason, you've decided to move to this particular location, I would hope that you would have the wherewithal to make the necessary improvements, at least basic improvements, before, not as you go. Now, we understand that can't everything be done at once, but there are certain things that we'd like to see as you begin the business, because otherwise it just kind of will just go along as it is, as long as things go. So again, assuming that you're a successful man, a successful businessman who's making a location to improve yourself, improve your business, I would hope that you would try to make it a better place than it is now.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I have a question regarding the timing of moving into the business here, into the property. You currently have an existing business in Chicago, you're going to purchase this building. What is the timeframe from the time that you actually close to the time that you actually intend on operating your business?
Well, October 14th is the closing. October 17th is the day I would like to move in and operate the business.
To operate, okay. So really, because you mostly have your, you know, it's away from the office or the shop, you're just, you're just transitioning your deliveries to this facility? You'll have your techs come in and pick up the materials and go out? It's not, it's not a long-term transition?
Correct.
Okay. As far as disposal of damaged windshields or side windows glass, do your techs take those, those pieces and dispose of them at your facility?
Yeah, the following morning, when they come in to reload their jobs for the day, yeah, I have two dumpsters, okay, on the premises, so they can throw away the windshields and whatever.
What size dumpsters do you have?
Ah, God.
Are they fairly large, I mean, four foot by six foot? And I know they're about four foot tall, or are they larger than that?
I think they're about four by six, correct, yes. And I have two.
Two, okay. And do you exceed the capacity of those, and how often do they get picked up?
Twice a week.
Twice a week?
Mondays and, Mondays and Thursdays.
So has there ever been a situation where you have glass sitting around outside?
No, never, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, you know, safety and, you know, disposal. I don't want to see anybody leaving things outside.
Right.
So you have, you have regular pickup, you know, twice a week? Okay.
Because that was the problem I had with the prior owners.
Thank you.
If you would come up to the podium, the home audience cannot hear you.
That was the problem that I had with the previous owner. The trucks were there, the garbage were there, the tires, parts from the car stools, it was, it was constant. But I didn't bother more here, I just went knock at the door and said, "Clean it up already", you know?
This is a different type of business than what was operating there before. I mean, when I say different type, this is a much cleaner operation, and I understand.
If they dig the windshields, I used to do cleaning for Mercedes-Benz, Lord Motors. And the back gets pretty messy if the people don't take care of them, picking up the upholstery.
That's the purpose of my questions, is to understand that there is enough capacity in the dumpsters, there won't be any glass left outside, we're hearing that, and other than that, I don't really have any questions. I mean, other than one last comment, please pick up, I mean, please, please do something, you know, as far as what Mr. Pill said, you know, as far as cleaning up the property, you know, as far as making sure that the building gets, you know, a little more presentable, and also the other issues with the fence and apron.
I do not know how long you guys have been, have known the area, but you, if you can remember those two properties, the conditions they were, and the conditions they are now, you will know that I have improved immensely those homes. My landscaping and everything, I have kept up with the properties and improved them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleet?
Mr. McBride, would you talk about how the traffic flow will work in the mornings so the guys start showing up? Do they come in one end of the building, go out the other?
Yes, sir. They'll most likely come in through Chicago and leave out of, what is that, Naperville?
Naperville, yes.
Yes, sir. They'll leave out of that interest.
No further questions.
Okay, the one question, I have a bunch of questions. One is the gate on Naperville Road that's going to be repaired and the fence. Right now, it looks like it's a 16-foot-wide gate?
I believe so.
Are you going to decrease the size of that because you probably don't need?
Yeah, I won't need that. I'll probably just, but eight-foot gate, 10-foot gate?
Eight-foot gate, so as the gate is opened, if it opens into your lot, or even if it opens to Naperville Road, it won't encroach on the lady's driveway?
No.
So you should be gaining a little bit that way. I would also, let's see, traffic in and out, you've taken care of that, the gates. I would also like to see if you could clean up the asphalt area on the Naperville roadside from the doorways, from the overhead doors, and from the gate area out to the street, if that could be asphalt. I don't think that would in fact necessitate the stormwater.
It's just the approach, right?
Just the approach.
We would consider that maintenance.
Yeah.
The key word in regard to Commissioner Pill's admonition earlier, Mr. Chairman, was that we can't allow a disturbance in excess of 5,000 square feet or something that changes the site plan.
Okay.
If either one of those two things occurs, then that would trigger a reengineering and possibly a stormwater detention requirement.
And Commissioner Fidesco raised the refuse containers. Are they stored outside or inside?
They're outside now.
They are?
But they'll be inside.
They'll be inside in the future?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so that's a plus. Okay, good. You're going to generate sales tax for the village?
Yes, sir.
That's a plus. Okay, Commissioner Pill also brought up the, I believe it was Commissioner Pill, the trees on the west end of the property on Chicago Avenue, they're, they're not sufficient, they're, they wouldn't even make good firewood, to be honest with you. They should be taken down and get some decent trees put in, as far as I'm concerned. Okay, you've handled traffic in and out, you're going to ingress, your helpers are going to come in on Chicago, egress out on Naperville, so that's good.
And, you know, that's probably, between, by 9:30, there'll be no more traffic there. My guys are gone.
If they're still there, you're in trouble.
Yeah.
Because you're not making any money. All right. One of the other things I think we should do in a separate motion, allude to the special conditions, if you would, that staff has got. If we could get a motion, I'll call for it and have that included as part of the special use, as a separate motion. Okay, since we've got a, need a special use permit, may we have readings of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. All operations will be conducted indoors except for the storage of vehicles awaiting service or pickup, which will be screened. Adequate parking for employees and vehicles is available on-site. Most surrounding properties are Zone B-2 general business. No auto painting, body repair work, or auto sales shall occur at this site. As such, this proposed use will not affect the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The proposed use will operate from an existing building, sufficient parking is available. All operations will be conducted indoors and will not result in adverse noise, vibration, odors, or traffic. As such, this use will not adversely affect surrounding properties. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for use as permitted in the district. The proposed use will operate from an existing building and therefore will not impede any future development of the surrounding area. Criteria number four, that the adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. All such necessary facilities are already available to this site. Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Existing ingress and egress can accommodate the limited traffic to and from this property. Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commissioned. No variances or code waivers are sought in conjunction with this proposed use. Criteria number seven, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition number seven. The applicant has submitted a landscaping plan showing new trees and bushes, which will screen vehicles awaiting service and customer pickup. A fence currently shields the view of the property from Naperville Road.
If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. Okay, I do have the findings of fact referring to the landscaping plan. I think it's deficient in that the trees in the front, and I hope we can address that through the committee at the whole and-
I think, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, staff can interpret the landscaping plan which has been filed and shows clearly some trees up on the, what would be the southwest corner of that building. We'll stipulate that those be replaced with healthy trees of a similar type.
That, I think that would be very good. Okay, so the findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 11040, special use permit request to operate an auto glass and upholstery business in the B2 general business district. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion, please. I'm sorry, a roll call.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Mr. Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Rich?
Yes. Okay, I would entertain a, I would like a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, the eight stipulations that are in our packet, call them conditions. So moved.
Second.
I have a question on the motion.
Yes.
I'd like to add to that, that point number two be expanded to allow vehicles that are incidental to his business, that they can be parked inside. He may find a time where he needs to have one of those vans or a pickup truck left inside, and I think that would be punitive to not allow that. I mean, that's his business, he's got this facility- I mean, that's his business, he's got this facility, so I think that should be, that should be allowed and it should be delineated. Additionally, there's no reference here to the north fence with the gate and its, its, its state. That's not described anywhere, and I think that should be also just brought into play here, that that's going to be repaired and, and, and made to look a lot nicer than it currently looks.
And decrease the size of the opening.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even necessarily have a, I mean, he's the one who's going to determine what he needs to have the opening. I think as long as it's done tastefully, it can be the same size or smaller, that part doesn't bother me. I just want to see that it's repaired and that it looks nice.
Mr. Chairman, if the maker and the second of that, the second motion would so agree to those stipulations, staff will incorporate those into the, to the eight stipulations.
Absolutely. That, those are my comments.
Do you agree to that?
I agree to that.
Okay, then just one clarification, though. No tow trucks, semi-trailers, or similar items will be stored onsite except vehicles...
Incidental to the pursuit of his business.
Incidental to his business.
Yes.
Is that okay with everybody?
That's fine.
Hey, is that okay with you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, you have our recommendation, and I wish you a lot of luck. I hope you get to open very soon.
Thank you.
Staff can tell you when you'll go before a committee of the whole.
Thank you.
Do any commissioners have any concerns, anything to talk about? Fred, I do have something.
Yes, sir.
How is, I'm not conversant with all of the village ordinances, zoning. Are you familiar with the wind turbine at the school on Chicago Avenue, Clarinet Hills? The vertical-axis wind turbine?
I have driven by it and seen it.
Okay. What kind of zoning laws do we have? Because these things are probably going to be starting up in residential areas.
We are hopeful, Mr. Chairman, that this is something that we can receive guidance from, from our comprehensive plan consultants. We think that it is essential that we move to incorporate some provisions that would allow us to regulate wind energy devices like this. We think they're the coming thing, we're going to see more and more of them, and we think as a part of the comprehensive planning process, that that is something that we will seek to incorporate into our zoning ordinances, to give the village some measure of control to these things so that they don't get out of hand.
Do you also anticipate building codes for solar panels, location, and mounting upon roofs and...
I think we already have those in, in the 2003 IBC. We are in the process of analyzing and looking towards adoption, possibly, of the 2006 IBC series. We will check with our contractual plan reviewers and building inspectors, Don Morris Architects, to verify that fact for you.
Okay, well, one, one concern, we're not going to be done with the comprehensive plan, we just started.
Yes, sir.
Probably a year, I think more like two years. We could be faced with some of these vertical-axis wind turbines in the meantime. I, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea, is if the trustees and perhaps the attorney would start to...
Very good.
Wouldn't hurt to get a, an ordinance drafted, and it can always be changed...
I agree.
If it doesn't fit into the comprehensive plan. So I think that'd be a good idea.
We will certainly move in that direction, yes.
Okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I had a few things, sorry.
Oops.
A couple of items, if I may. The first is that I wanted to announce that our, our comprehensive plan community workshop is scheduled for October 4th at 7:00 PM, so that will occur before our next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, so I want to make sure that everyone, members of the public, know about that, and they're free to attend. Our, our contract consultant, Tausiel Levine, will be leading that workshop, and it'll be a great opportunity to get feedback from our residents. That'll be at 7 o'clock. The location is to be determined due to our overwhelming response rate for some of our surveying methods. We had a, a community tool that was online, and we had over 400 responses to that. Our consultant feels that our space right here may not actually be adequate based on their experience in other places, so that's good news. It seems like we've got a, an active constituency that wants to participate in planning the future of our village. And then, just the second other item, this is more of a housekeeping item, so, because we're here together, due to some time constraints, your packets were mailed out this week, and that raised some questions from some of you privately as to whether or not you might prefer digital distribution of, of your packet materials. Is that something that we would be happy to do for those of you that are interested, but wondered if there was any sort of group consensus?
I had suggested that you send them to us online and have them available in printed form when we arrive for our reference when we come here, so we don't have to run our printers out of them. At, at least save the postage, I noticed it was 5:01 to have it sent via the mail, so we'd save it in that regard.
Well, that was the first time we've had that, and I assume that was because there was just sort of an emergency situation there. But I, I guess the question is, I visit every property, I guess that means you got to take a laptop with you then, because there's no way you're going to print out some of these beautiful drawings that we get. There's other times where...
That's true.
Some of the things are not very good, but some of them are full-size blueprints, and that gets difficult to review on a laptop or trying to print those out. That's the only negative to that.
Yeah, I, I can see that.
We wouldn't...
I also like to go Saturdays, usually get the packet Friday. Saturdays, I go out and read the packet as, as, so I don't know.
We wouldn't anticipate needing to mail them to unless there were some extraordinary circumstance like there was this time.
There was one, obviously.
Yeah, it's not that we're trying to shift to mailing the packets, it's just that having done that this one time raised questions about delivery and whether online would be better, more efficient, more green, but yes, we are always getting those large-size plans, the color renderings, and that does make it a little bit more challenging for a commission like ours.
And I think that's a very valuable part of, of our preparation. I, I would feel remiss in my preparation if I didn't have those documents in the form that they're provided to us by the submitter to look at.
Does everyone feel comfortable with...
I concur with you, Brad, I like that very much. I like to have the packet delivered to me.
Yeah, and I'll chime in. I do like the fact that I can spread out the drawings, take a look at them. You know, I'm a visual person, and it's great, you know, I, I work all day with, you know, looking at documents and drawings, and when I do, trying to scroll around, and I have two large screens at my desk, and trying to scroll around and enlarge and move, you know, get the, get the mouse so you can move it and drag it over here so you can actually blow up an area to look at, it's real difficult, because then you lose the entire vision. It's so nice to just take a look at the big drawings.
Make notes right on them?
Yeah.
Okay, is that everyone's kind of consensus? Thank you for the feedback. That's all I had.
I hate to admit it, but I forgot where we were. Did we have a motion and a second to adjourn?
No.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.